Okay, we're here for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Darian zoning board of appeals. We will go through the agenda as was posted. We do have a couple of continuations this evening. We will try and deliberate on hearings if we get sufficient information. We'll deliberate them at the end of the hearing. During that deliberation process, the applicants are not allowed to speak, but we are certainly allowed to listen. With that being said, we are going to continue calendar number eight, 2021. And Woody, can I ask a question? I realize we're continuing this, but we are on the record. Can I ask a question about these applications?
Yeah. Sure.
I had a couple of very specific requested items from the applications on dimensions, et cetera. And I obviously didn't see it submitted for this hearing. I would hope that it would be submitted for the October hearing, but the October hearing is the last time we can hear these applications? Or can the applicant consent to a further continuance? No? Okay.
We'd be out of time and the applicants haven't advised us. One of them, I did get some information today, so that's good. And it says our application date for an October meeting, so. The other one I haven't heard though, as far as Rivera wrote at Brown, changes to their plan.
Okay, so just, yeah, as long as the applicant is aware of that, maybe they can go back and look at the previous meeting just to refresh their memory on what we're looking for. So we're going to continue calendar number eight, 2021. We were also going to continue calendar number 11, 2021. Those will be heard at our October hearing. With the continuances out of the way, we'll move on to our public hearing portion. This is calendar number 14, 2021. The, Mark, I'm going to put your name, May Deek, hopefully, on behalf of Noah Charney for Nine Butler's Island Road.
That's right. Yeah, you got the name pretty close.
So go ahead and I'll give you over the Fred if they need the presenter or whatever they need.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm just. Can't do this at once. Oh, no. I'll get it right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark May Deek. I am here representing the Charney family in their request for variance at Nine Butler's Island Road. I'm an architect and I've helped them out trying to design a small addition to their house. And I'm going to walk through the reasons for the variance and what we're asking for, hopefully, and hopefully that'll make sense. The purpose of this application is to request relief from the, what would be considered a front yard setback on this property to add some dormers in an existing attic above in a garage and finish out the space therein. The point that I'm going to make is essentially that the existing property and house predate current zoning regulations and the aids in the house and the topography and some other limitations like coastal area management and proximity to water make additions to this house difficult. So we tried to minimize what the addition was by the work we did above the garage. The existing property is one and a quarter acres roughly in the R1 zone and it's on the water in Butler's Creek Island. The structure itself was built in 1914 with very nice detailing throughout and has nice character. But obviously that does mean that the house itself was built about the time of the First World War, which is incredible. The Charney family purchased the house in 2015, about six years ago. And the Charney family are a family of six, mom, dad, four kids that range in age from seven to 14. And they all love sports and you know what that means. They got all the boards and bikes and all the hockey equipment you can imagine. And dad Noah, Noah's on the call with us tonight. He has been working from home. So that also takes up a bit of real estate in the house. And they also wanted me to point out that they have a large dog and I've met the dog and I will agree that he is large and rambunctious. I've got, maybe it's a she, I'm sorry. Existing conditions, the house, as I mentioned, 1914, very traditional styling. Let's see some pictures, some photographs of it here. This garage is where we're hoping to do our addition, which is basically is putting dormers on the front and the back to increase the livable space upstairs. And this is the backside of the garage building, the structure. And this is again where we'd like to put some, a dormer. The property is located here on what's called Butler's Island, not really an island because there's a land bridge now to it. But it sits on Butler's Island Road and North Road. And in fact, until I started doing the zoning application, I didn't realize that this side was a front setback and that there was a road that actually went down to other houses. It's pretty small and tight down there. So it actually, I thought it was a driveway, but nonetheless, this is a site plan of the property. You can see here, I'm not going to go into this particular drawing in much detail, but you can see there's a lot of setbacks and wetlands and water lines and a lot of, let's say, complications in developing this property. This is the first floor, existing first floor. And the area where we'd like to do an addition on the first floor is here. This is not in a setback. This is as of right, but I'm showing this in the context of the rest of the project, which is basically rebuilding the existing kitchen into a larger kind of family room, sitting TV room. And on the second floor existing, again, this is the existing floor plan and this is a little bit of master bathroom work we'd like to do. But the subject of today's conversation is over here on the right. It's in blue. The, above the garage, some dormer build out. And existing elevations, front, rear, left and right. And I have the proposed elevation, so we'll get to those. The zoning chart I have here just for reference, but in fact, nothing changes on the zoning chart. Everything remains as is. The one thing to discuss is the minimum side yard, or actually it would be the front yard. Whoops, it has, it has no change, but that's the one that we are requesting relief from. The hardships of this property include age of the subdivision and the lot and the structure that again, that was built in 1914, more than 100 years ago. The character of the house actually comes into play as well, but that's not perhaps a hardship. But there is, a lot shape is very irregular. There is flood zones, proximity to water, which again, limit the development of the property, DE and AE zones, and it is subject to coastal area management. And lastly, there's a topography. There's grade that drops 28 feet across the back of the property. And actually I put all those in sort of a graphic representation here. And you can see the irregular shape of the property, almost shaped like a comma. And then the gray is all the setback area as a result of this being kind of on a corner. And then the purple is the flood line, that's AE 13. And up at the top, you can see the topography go from plus four to plus 32, a difference of 32, or sorry, 28 feet. And again, the light blue represents where we're hoping to do our addition. The requested relief is to reduce the front yard technically in order to allow us to add dormers. And the proposed design again is above the garage. And here's a detail of the dormers that we're looking to do in the front facing the street for the Butler's Island Street. Are it's a few doghouse dormers. And at the rear is a shed dormer, which allows for a bit more volume. And the proposed floor plan, we are also at the same time increasing the size of the kitchen and great room. As I, as I mentioned earlier, to be more of a sitting area, TV kind of breakfast type use. So it increases the kitchen and this whole sitting area. And importantly, we also have the staircase now that goes from this area, whoops, from this area up into the new workout room. So that's, that's important to keep in mind because we do need to have that shed go towards the back of the garage so that we can actually accommodate the staircase. On the second floor, this is again, just a minor note, but we do expand the bathroom here. And then the fitness room here above the garage with a powder room to rinse off. And that's as a consequence of doing the two dormers. At the front elevation overall, there's a few doghouse dormers facing Butler's Island. At the back, again, this is the whole elevation. It's got the shed dormer facing the rear of the property. This is the left elevation, kind of hard to see from this side, but this is the dormer would be way in the distance over there. And then on the right elevation, there are the three doghouse dormers that would be viewed. Let me close the door. Sorry, hold on a second. I did see Woody's notes from staff and I just wanted to respond if I briefly could on the size. And there's a few things I'd like just to mention, and one of which is the traditional nature of the house. It's very old and it uses spaces in a very traditional way and thus it's harder to be efficient and match today's lifestyle. The basement, we investigated the basement to see if we could use that area, but it really is untenable. It's too low. There's no light. It's a bit moist. It's basically rubble wall construction. And I'll show you what I mean by size as relative, this last, last comment. The character of the house, like I said, very, very traditional. So, and what that means as a practical reality is that most houses, for example, looking at this front photograph, most houses would not have a front foyer this large. So we end up quote, I mean, in a sense, losing this area for usable square footage. And you can see that that sort of styling throughout the house. And the truth is, we'd like to keep the sort of traditional nature of the house. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking at doing this versus other alternatives. And here's a little photograph of the basement and you can see on the right, the rubble walls. So it really, it's not a tenable place to put anything really. And the second last thing is that life has kind of changed as it has for all of us. The reason we're on this go-to meeting calls because we're all working from home and as is Noah, working from home. And this is his home office, which is a bit tight. And I'm only bringing this up as a, as a sort of a barometer of how much space there is or isn't in the house. So I'd just like to keep that in mind. And the last thing is looking at that island quote, as a whole, the average house there is nearly 7,000 square feet. By the way, I'll comment, these numbers are all from Xylo, so these are all, they're relative to each other, not to the application. So just keep that in mind when you look at these numbers. I'm not, I'm not saying that the house is 4,500 square feet. I'm saying that this is the same calculated, the same way on all these houses. So that, but the punchline is that we're less than 2,000, currently less than 2,000 square feet, less than the average size of the house on the island. And lastly, I just wanted to point out that all of the neighbors that Noah has spoken to are in support of this project. The Abutters within 100 feet, the Monteros, the Menguals, the Gallics and Schlinkert are all in support of it. They've written emails and we have uploaded those. Additional residents on the island, the Glassmeyers, the Wilkins, the Wiggins and the Donahes have written emails, which I've also uploaded in support of this project. There's another family there, the Dering family, also in support of the project, but they didn't have a chance to write an email, but they have verbally told us that they were in support of the project as well. The Beach Club has not, has not responded to our, to our inquiry. But nonetheless, they didn't, I guess they didn't have any problem with it. At least they didn't show up to the meeting. And I think that's it. I think that's our presentation. That's what we're hoping to get done and open to any questions or comments or feedback that the committee might have for us.
Okay, I'll open it up to, why don't we start with Dan if you have any questions?
Yeah. Make sure I don't have my new tone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
The current structure as it stands right now, is it fully compliant to the current flood guidelines?
Yeah, so the, I'll show you this drawing here. The, if you can see the dark purple line, this is the flood line. So we're, the current structure is outside of that flood line. It's well above the flood line. I think the flood, the flood line is AE 13 and I think the first floor of the house is at plus 28 or something like that. So even the basement is probably 20 feet, I would guess 19 or 20 feet, which puts us well above the flood line.
Okay, so the proposed structure would be fully compliant?
Yes, the proposed structure would also be fully compliant.
Okay.
Kevin?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mike.
Barb?
Will you remind me how much additional square footage you're putting in the setback? Is it, I think it's this feet?
I have it, I have it right here. The additional square footers we're looking in the back is approximately 260 square feet. So it's 227 plus 35 feet, whatever that is. So 262.
Okay. And, and did you give anything up? You're not taking anything away from the existing footprint anywhere? Like taking a shed down or something else on the property?
No.
Okay. And then my last question is you said you looked at the basement as an option. I saw the picture. It looks terrible. I wouldn't use that either. Any other options on the property? Did you consider a secondary structure? Or does the topography and the wetland make it?
There's no wetlands. There's no wetlands, but the topography makes it, it's hard. Like I don't really have any good photographs of the topography situation, but I can show you this here. So the property along the water is nearly, nearly zero and it slopes out very steeply up the background here at that 32. And it, it's just, it's hard to imagine putting anything anywhere. The, the net area you're left without a variance to put anything would be sort of right in, right out the back of the, of the living room. If it were, if it were a separate structure, which doesn't, I don't think work. And we really, really didn't want it. We did not really look at putting anything towards the front of the house just because it's, just because of the sort of, I don't want to overstate it, but the historical nature of the house. You know, coming out the front of here, I think would be, anything you do coming out the front would kind of ruin the architecture, if you will.
And did you, are there any landscaping additions that are going to happen? It sounds like the neighbors, you have their support. Maybe that's not necessary, but anything we should be aware of?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Landscaping to shadow, I mean, you're going up in height. Are you adding trees or anything to soften that height addition? I guess you're not going up in height. You're just being out.
Yeah, I mean, we hadn't considered necessarily any landscaping, but I don't know that that, I believe that the owner would consider that.
Okay. By the way, I thought this was a great presentation and I'm like a huge fan of saving old homes. If you've ever heard me before, like this is a big thing for me. I love you've kept the integrity of this home. I think it's really pretty.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it. For what it's worth, the pictures that Mark showed were before we bought it. We tried to restore it and make it look more traditional than even those pictures show. But yes, we, we agree. So thanks for the thoughts.
Jeff?
I'm good, sir. Thank you.
The only question, Barb, great job. Yes, pretty much everything I was going to ask. The only other one, and this is Woody's favorite question that I asked, will this structure support a second story?
I'm sorry, I don't, will it support a second story? Oh, meaning do we have to redo the structure of the first floor to support it?
Correct.
Is that the question? The, the answer is yes, but we will probably have to put an interstitial beam below the existing floor joists. So I mean, we won't change the structure, but it would, it would be a beam, some perhaps a supporting beam below. It's not sized right now, but that's, that's how I imagine it'll be accomplished. We wouldn't rip out the floor, if that's the question.
So you're going to maintain the existing first floor structure, but add possibly some additional supporting elements?
Correct.
And you've checked the foundation. It's deep enough to support a second story?
I believe so, yeah. In fact, I think, I don't know if Woody mentioned this, but the garage itself is from 1965. So I actually, I should have pointed that out, my apologies. But the garage is, is not contemporaneous with the house. So meaning that's a good thing in the sense that the foundations they, they were doing back at that time were a little better than the ones from 1914.
Yeah, okay. I have, I have nothing further. Barb, I'm not, to your point, we can talk about it in deliberations. I'm not as concerned with screening here just because it's such a narrow neighborhood. If we start putting screening on the road, we sort of limit vehicle access. And, but we could talk about that further if that's important to you. Okay, Woody, anything further from you?
Yeah, no, thank you. Just the staff question note about the putting green. Yep, and maybe to landscape of some things there, some evergreen trees, screening, shrubs or something. The neighborhood is very lush, very full of wonderful vegetation, except for this area near this garage. Happy to, happy to do it. We have been contemplating it already. It's a good suggestion.
Okay. Well, Woody, that runs us into that issue that we have with this type of screening though. If we're going to insist on screening and we don't have a plan in front of us, then we're going to have to look at staff to approve the screening. You know, and we've had some issues with that in the past. So I mean, let's just be clear on what we're asking the applicant to do. If we're asking him to screen, we should probably talk that through as part of the application.
I agree.
I would just, I would just add, I'm not sure what screening accomplishes here, right? The dormers are, call it 15 feet off the ground. We're certainly not going to require 15 foot screening. And in my estimation, the dormers are a more attractive look than what's currently there. So I'm not sure exactly what we're going to accomplish with that.
And I agree that with that as well, I, I mean, if everybody wants to discuss screening, then we need to, we need to go through it. But I have no interest in discussing screening. I don't think it's necessarily required or any other adjective you can think of.
I agree. I was, I was just asking more for information. That's great.
So let's, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Josh might be the only option there.
Josh, Josh is with us.
Okay, so seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the application. That was easy.
Great. Thank you for your time and consideration, guys.
Nice, that's great. So we will move into deliberations and discussions. Again, this is not probably part of the hearing. I do think that there is a hardship here. Clearly it was found by this board previously. I don't think the photography of the land or the other items have changed since this board found that. The question I guess is, you know, we always talk about additional space and looming and is this a minimum adjustment necessary? You know, I think Kevin, you pointed out that this thing is kind of set into the ground as it is. It's, it's got some grade that comes up to the side of it. So it's, it's not like it's a full one and a half story or two-story structure. It's a pretty, pretty low structure on the property. I honestly, I do think that there's a hardship in the topography and I don't, I should have asked the applicant how they did during the latest round of storms. But I wouldn't encourage them to put more, more construction in the AE zone. You know, flooding is a real issue with our town right now. You know, I think asking people to move stuff into a zone that's prone to flooding really doesn't make a lot of sense for the town plan and conservation. So I'm inclined to, to grant this with the stipulation that, Woody, you're satisfied with the structural elements. And that that foundation, I know it was done in the 60s, you know, my house was built in the 60s and there were certainly some corners cut that I've had to deal with. So just making sure that it is up to current code and able to support that second story structure. I don't think that there's any need for screening. Again, I think back to Kevin's point and Barb, I think you're just asking a question because it's on our staff questions. But with that, do, I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jeff seconds, all in favor? Unanimous?
Mark, your presentation was great, man. I don't know how many times you've done that, but that was very clear, concise, to the point. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yeah, Woody.
I agree.
You could almost use that as a textbook model for an applicant.
Yeah.
I agree.
No, no question about it. No question about it.
You can hand my name out to people that are looking to do variances if you want. That'd be fine with me.
Then while the best I was going to do for you is tell Noah, who I don't see anymore, that whatever you charge him is well worth it and to pay the bill.
Well, let me get, hold on, let me get him back on the phone.
All right, so we're on to our other, other business portion of the evening. Woody, you've got a couple of sets of minutes to approve.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
July 14th, you circulated those, right?
Yes.
And I believe we got.
Several weeks ago on the 14th.
Yeah, and I believe we got some comments and some, some changes with those incorporated. I'd make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I didn't catch any, pardon me, I didn't catch any edits or anything from anyone.
I thought, I thought Bill had a couple of nits, but if he didn't, that's fine.
I'll ask him, but I don't think so. Who made the motion and such?
I did and Jeff seconded and Jeff, Dan and Barb and I approved.
Okay. July 21st.
July 21st. I think the same thing. Those are circulated by email.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Election of officers? Maybe we table that for this evening?
They're still not ready, huh?
Still not ready.
What, what did you say, Mike? What?
Election of officers.
Oh, I, sorry, I didn't hear you, but now I have. I would prefer to have that occur when Gary's on, yeah, Gary's online, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Future meeting procedures, so whether we return to in-person. I actually asked for this one to be added to the agenda and I think besides Jeff, you know, having a few issues tonight, I think this has been working okay. What's the general consensus, guys? I mean, do you want to go back to in-person? Do you want to continue this for now?
I have two comments. Mike, I have two comments. One comment is that, you know, I didn't realize that BOS, because I was, I went to that meeting or I videoed that meeting on Monday. Does BOS is not meeting in person? That was a bit, that was a virtual, that was a virtual meeting. And it looked like Jamie was in her office and no one else. I see. That's number one. Number two, Woody, have we ever gotten any complaints, bad feedback, any, any type of anything whatsoever with our process at this point? Anybody complain?
A little bit, you know, a little bit, that the body language, you know, especially from attorneys and sometimes architects. They want to see how you're doing this or whatever.
I get the comment.
There is some missing dynamics and even among the board members discussing stuff, there's, you know, I want to make point, stuff that doesn't quite flow. But let me just say, there is a process that's begun, I believe, this week of installing some screens in room 206 to allow us to move toward a hybrid arrangement. Where some of you could be in the room and some even elsewhere, where Cape Cod or wherever you are. So there is that possibility that we can work that out for the future. It's not ready, but. So if you guys, if you wanted to tough it out and actually maybe wear masks or sit near each other. Right now, there's still the distance and the masking that's requested in town hall. So I don't think we're ready to jump back here yet, but soon we could be.
Yeah, okay, so let's table that for now. You've got covered porch application. I think that's a Bill Hesser item and I need to talk to Bill about that. I think that's looking to sort of incorporate some of our, you know, okay projects into the zoning rules so that we don't actually have to have a hearing on those. And I think that's a smart idea, so I'll circle back.
Yeah, if you don't mind, let me ask if, I think Bill's thing was the five by eight foot practice that we've had. Yeah, if you don't mind, let me ask if, uh, I think Bill's thing was the five by eight foot practice that we've had. Uh, I think he questioned whether that was big enough. And maybe we should go to six by nine or something else. Um, would it be useful to do some research, maybe take some photos of porches and be able to show you, here's one that's one third of the length of the facade or one quarter or whatever. Uh, we do hear that sometimes that the five by eight doesn't seem to look right with the architecture of the building. So, and then we could make, make the commission, actually.
The, the, I mean, look, if, if the planning and zoning commission wants to do that, we, we, we've struck the five by eight as a safety issue, right? So we live, I've said this thousands, I live in New England, there's ice and snow. Covered porch helps to prevent people from slipping and falling coming out their front door. You know, five by eight gives them enough room for three door, three foot door to swing and a couple of people to stand there. Um, if planning and zoning wants to address that and change the, the rules to make it a third of the front of the, that's fine by me. But that, I don't think that's our, we, we, we've approved all of those under a health and safety standard, not as an aesthetic. Um, so, I mean, that's, unless someone thinks differently of that, I think that's sort of where I come out. Kevin, you might have some thoughts on that.
No, I, I mean, I, I just don't feel like I'm qualified to make that assessment. That seems like that you're, I think that's a broad policy question for planning and zoning. Five by eight seems to be reasonable. Um, and, and, and I think in terms of like, Woody, you going out and doing a study and analyzing other porches, that feels like a planning and zoning job, not a Board of Appeals job. Um, five by eight is the policy we've set. I think a broader discussion of it is not really in our purview. It's just my general sense.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with that, Woody. All right, so, um, I'll, I'll talk to Bill about that and I think, I think we can bring that up to planning and zoning, let them run with it from there.
While you mention Bill, I mean, let me mention that he's moved to Miami. My understanding is he wants to switch his voter registration to be able to vote there. And that would exempt him from being a ZBA member. You apparently have to be an elector registered voter. So now the question is, he's going to return, he said, the end of the school year, which, so question is whether he should hang on, let's say, and rejoin the board when he returns to Darien. He's keeping his Darien house, but just so you know, he's really not available now to go view properties. And we've basically concluded, it sounds like he shouldn't serve.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. No, I, I think, uh, I think, look, if he's changed his registration to vote, he's, he's off. Um, and, and that's just that.
But that does give us two vacancies, basically.
All right, so we need a, we need, what, an R and a D still?
Uh, well, at least a D, and I think Bill is unaffiliated or something, but, well, I'll check on that.
I think, I, I think I brought Bill in as a Republican, actually.
Okay.
But, uh, okay, all right, so Woody, that, that's a, that's a other business item. Um, I'll, 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 I'll work on the Republican side. Dan, if you can help me with the Democrat side, we'll put a little pressure on Gary to help as well.
Sure.
I mean, we need Barb every meeting nowadays.
I know.
We like having Barb.
Thanks.
It's your job, you know, what the heck?
My job.
Barb, I've been pushing, I've been pushing through to try and get to number six for you, so preservation considerations.
How about that presentation?
Where's that?
My sister did it, Liz did it.
Oh, no wonder.
No wonder. So, but I think, I, I like what it says. I mean, it's basically saying, we need to recognize these historic significant properties and not as a hardship for people, well, it's a hardship, but it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity to preserve our town. And if you had a committee that looked at this and helped people navigate the process, it might be less likely to tear a house down or look for the easy solution. So, you know, she's even proposed in there, size of the committee, the timing of it, potential members. So, without going through the presentation, Mike, what do you want to do about this?
Why don't we add it to another business item of the agenda? Because I haven't seen that packet, I have no idea what it says. Um, and, and we're meeting again in October, so we can, uh, we can, we can listen to it then. And, and, um, in the meantime, if, if Jeff, you, Barb and Liz and I have to get together for some, you know, committee time to go over it, we can do that as well.
Yes, at the Goose for drinks. Let's get together and review that packet.
Trying to, trying to avoid that statement, but okay.
I'll circulate it. All right, all right, we will get together as a committee. All right, I'll circulate the packet and we can review.
Hey, can I, uh, can I jump in on something there? I'm looking at 94 Five Mile River Railroad for demolition. As part of what we do in the office is to make sure they don't flood out the neighborhood when they start tearing down a house. This is a house that's in the postmodern design, quite unusual, flat roofs, Frank Lloyd, British kind of, uh, is pretty well recognized. Uh, they came to us with a pretty good architect, Richard Bergman from the Canaan with some additions. I think in 2007, somewhere around there. They wanted to increase the coverage to 22% or so, but save the basic design of this postmodern style house and add to the style. Naturally, because they were jumping over in coverage, we discouraged them. And they ended up withdrawing the application. Sad to say, now moving forward, it's about to be torn down. With the town historian's blessing, because it's hard to stop. But it might just indicate to us that there could be occasions where spreading out volume and having more flexibility with coverage may help in some circumstances. I just bring it up because it's hot on us right now.
It's a good point.
Yeah. I could just add one thing for you guys' discussion at your committee meeting. I, I think it's a fantastic idea, right? I mean, we have very limited quills in our proverbial arrow holder thing, whatever you call it. Um, like the safety, if, safety issue, if people are reducing their non-conformance. Um, and there's some, I think, uh, times where we have a historical, um, ability based on historical quality to give variance, but I think it's got to be on the Historical National Register or something like that. I can't, so I think it would be tremendous to add this to our capabilities. Only question I would have is, and I think, my point is, we probably need to get thoughts from town council, is whether state law and/or the current zoning code allows us to do that. And if state law does allow it, whether and how we amend, uh, through planning and zoning or whatever the town code to allow for.
In, in the presentation, there's some reference to case law. There's also some examples of things that would qualify you as a historic or significant property, things like the national register, town plaque. You know, I, so I agree with you. I, and I know Mike's wanted to avoid the idea of a, of a historic variance for a long time because it's just, it's potential problems from a legal standpoint. But I think there's properties that should get special consideration.
I agree.
I agree. I agree. I agree that I've been resistant, but I agree that, uh, that we've got to figure out a way to do it. I agree, I agree all around. Guilty as charged. I mean, uh, kudos to Liz for, for doing the legwork and kudos to you, Barb, for doing the legwork. I think it's, it's a, it's a good issue and, and Darien has a, a, a warm, rich history and, and, um, I think we should try and do so, if, if, if we can, I think we should do something. I've always thought it was the, the role of planning and zoning, but if, if there's a way for us to do it, I'm happy to take on the role.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. I mean, as part of the committee, she proposed somebody from zoning, from planning and zoning, somebody from, um, you know, a town historian, a potential architect, somebody from our board. You know, and we don't want to get too crazy with this. The whole point is, it's just a simple resource of people that, that support this kind of work and can point you in the right direction. You know, when I sold, you guys probably all know this at this point, I sold the oldest home in Darien recently. And, I mean, we passed on so many offers because we were trying to find somebody that would preserve and keep the integrity of the home. And I, it was just such a struggle for them to come up with solutions. It would be so great if we could have said, hey, look, our town supports this, they're going to give you a tax break. Our town supports this, you can go outside of setbacks. Our town supports this, you can, you know, we'll figure it out, we'll work with you on it. I thought that would have been really great. They, they didn't. They kind of paved the way, which is what this whole thing is about. But, um, it would be a crime if that house was torn down. It's the oldest house in Darien and one of the oldest houses in Connecticut. Now, I don't know if we want to get into historic districts and all that stuff. It can be very limiting when you're selling a home. Um, but it's just worth some discussion and I, I can promise you that Liz and I will keep this simple and tight. Our goal is not to create work for anybody. Our goal is just to recognize these homes and say, if you've got this, before you tear that down, let me give you some options.
I agree. I agree 100%.
Hey, you can give a presentation like, uh, Mark, uh, Mark did tonight and I'm, I'm, I'm good with that presentation. That was good.
I can totally trump that. I can tell. I have, I have inside knowledge of the ZBA. I know what, I know what I'm doing.
Perfect.
Kevin, can I ask again, how, how'd you say that? It would be good to have another arrow in the quiver or something like that?
That's inelegantly, but yes, that's what I was trying to say. Limited arrows in our quiver, one more would be helpful, as long as there's some precise language surrounding when we can use it, right? I, I don't know what those standards would be. We can't have anybody coming in and saying, my house is really old. Um, we need, I don't know if it's some independent, the historical society makes a determination or there's some specific guidelines around it, but it would be helpful, I think.
So, nice. All right, good. I'll go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Jeff, all in favor?
On my track record.
Yeah, well, I, uh, thanks, Woody. Have a good evening. Thank you all for coming out.
Thanks, everybody.